Good evening. Good evening, everyone. Good evening. It's great to see you all out here tonight. It's a wonderful crowd. Glad to see so many people out here today. I will now bring this meeting to order. If you would all rise for the invocation that will be led this evening by Deacon John Dunlop from the St. Sebastian Catholic Church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance that will be led by Council Member Ayavino.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let us now bow our heads and pray for God's blessing upon us. Oh, God, our heavenly Father, we come before you with praise and with thanksgiving. Thank you for the gift of St. rather Sebastian because it's such a beautiful, beautiful city. It is a jewel of the South and its citizens. And those who are leading us this evening, give them the wisdom of Solomon. And let all of us in the peace of God, which is beyond all ages, come and enjoy this beautiful, beautiful gift of community. Thank you for the gift of the United States of America and all of the things which we are called to be. And we ask this in the powerful name of our Lord Jesus Christ, your Son, who lives and reigns with you in unity of the Holy Spirit, one God forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Deacon.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill. Mayor Hill.
Roll call. Here.
Okay. Thank you. Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Here.
Councilmember Dodd.
Here.
Councilmember Ayavino.
Here.
And Councilmember McPartlin.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, Council, speaking with the city manager before the meeting, he has the final plat approval for Cross Creek Lake Estates. I would like to get that under the consent agenda if possible. I'd like to have that as item 9F.
My second that.
No objections? All right, thank you. Are there any other modifications to the agenda tonight? All right, I hear none. Thank you. Leads us up to Proclamations, Awards, and Brief Announcements. We have our good friends from the Sebastian Clambake Foundation here with the presentation of proceeds to the 2017 beneficiaries. Please.
Yes. I'm so excited. Thank you very much, City Council. And then can I turn around?
Please, yes.
We can flip it, right? Oh, yeah. Thank you. Jean, thank you. Thank you. That it? Everybody hear me? Thank you, guys. Good evening. So grateful that we have this time. We're really grateful for our city council because once they give me the mic, it's all over.[241.90][241.90](Laughter). You guys who were here last year know, and great gratitude for us having this time. But it's worth it. I mean, this is a great thing. We're giving away money to organizations that really deserve it. And when we give it, they're each going to have just a brief second to say a little bit about what they do, so everybody can have a kind of a rough idea what's going on. I just want you all to know that our total since 2002 of money we've given away, right? And that's with two years not having it. One year because Francis and Jean had other ideas, and another year because of some local craziness. We have given away $767,036.[283.33][283.33](Applause). And of course, we couldn't do it without so many things, so I have to do my Oscar speech now and thank people. But great gratitude for our partnerships. Some would say major sponsors. These are our partnerships. City of Sebastian, oh my God, thank you guys so much. Joe, I don't know what we're going to do without you. I have you on speed dial. You're retiring. I'm going to miss you terribly, and I speak for our entire organization in that, I'm sure. So hopefully, your replacement will be like you. So you always led with your heart, so thank you. The Police Department, I don't see Michelle Morris here, but they've been just wonderful, Sebastian Police. They go above and beyond. I mean, all these, these organizations are always going to help events in the park, but they just seem to go above every year for us. Another great partnership is with J.J. Taylor Distributing, otherwise known as the Beer Guys. But they have considered the Clambake their charity. And in doing so, we get a lot of like really great free stuff. And therefore, when we get free stuff, our beneficiaries benefit. So we're really grateful for that partnership. Press Journal, our advertising that they do for us, that is an in-kind sponsorship as well. Again, if we had to pay for that, our beneficiaries would get less money. And Jim Smalley and crew from Smalley Sheds, very grateful to them. That's where the ticket booths come from, if we had to pay for those. So you know the drill. And if I forget anybody, please, please excuse me and forgive me. At a high sponsorship level, this year, the Realty people really came out. Dale Sorenson, Real Estate, Coldwell Banker, which has been a sponsor for years, as has Remex Crown Realty. So we're grateful to those people, too. And much gratitude to our Sebastian Clambake Foundation Board of Directors, several of whom are here tonight. And if you would stand up when I call your name. Oh, come on.[417.58][417.58](Laughter). You know, they really are selfless people. They're not interested in having attention. I mean, they work all year long on this thing, and they're not just a board that sits there and makes policy. Everybody's active. Everybody's working. Nancy Veat is our treasurer. Dot Judah is a director and past treasurer.[437.31][437.31](Applause). Teddy Holtz is a doer of all things when needed.[443.71][443.71](Applause). Mark Gingrich is our vendor guy.[448.11][448.11](Applause). If you've ever had to deal with vendors, or if you've ever been a vendor, you know what that job's about. I don't know if anybody else is here. Pat Revizio is our vice president. He's supposed, there you are. Pat's in the back.[461.02][461.02](Applause). Pat also is in charge of the food, and he's another one of those doer of all things. So other directors not here tonight are Wayne Snow and Teresa Canapes. I think I got everybody. Yeah. Oh, and Christie Woodward, too. Is Christie here?
No.
Christie's been, she's awesome, too. And one of the things Teresa does is she gets all the people from the banks to staff the ticket booths, and she's our treasurer. Okay. Or secretary, I mean, sorry. Very confused. Also want to thank a few people who have really been great for volunteers. Richard O'Connor, who books our bands. If you came, if you went down to the Fine Arts and Music Festival, those bands were booked by him as well. He's booked the Clambake bands. Want to thank Lizanne Robinson, her designs for our T-shirts, awesome from the slogans. Annie Raftery, doesn't stop helping us with the food. Sean Revizio, Connor, Bob, Sal Naglia, the Elks Club. The Elks Club and the people from Kashi helped break down and saved Pat probably, what, two days of work? Yeah. Because you guys have no idea, setting up and breaking down is an incredible amount of work. So thank you to all of those. Okay. Member organizations. You may ask, how do people get chosen to get this money? Well, we have 10 member organizations, and each one of these organizations sends one voting member to the Members' Council. And then if you want to be a beneficiary, you go in front of the Members' Council, and you present your project, and they vote. So those of us on the board actually, we're off the hook always because we have no say in where the money goes. So the member organizations are Sebastian Soccer Association, Kashi Ashram, American Legion Post 189, Sebastian River High Crew, the Rowing Club, Sebastian Elks Club, Sebastian River High Athletics, the Knights of Columbus, Sebastian Property Owners, GFWC Sebastian Junior Women's Club, long name, but I got it right this time, right? Thank you.[591.63][591.63](Laughter). And the Treasure Coast Rugby Foundation. Now, these, these members are responsible for really getting the food out there. Between them, they get more than 600 volunteers to do this. So everybody says to us on the board, oh, thank you, guys. Yep, we do great, and so do the 600 volunteers who are there all the time and who help us. And you, I can't even, I would never have time to name everybody. So that's how you become a beneficiary. And those are our member organizations, and we have a lot of gratitude for them. So in order to cut to the chase, why don't we start giving away some money, Nancy? We're going to start with the program grants. And up until two years ago, we only gave funds for capital improvements. And so if nobody was building anything, there wasn't, you know, money to give away to people building things because there wasn't that much being built. So we decided to give program grants out. So that's going to be our first, our first thing. And what I'm going to ask is if, when I call you, if you could come up, Nancy, our treasurer will give you your check, and you can take the mic for a second and tell everybody what this money's going to, because you can say it better than I can. And let's start out with Sebastian River High School's Chum Bucket Program.[669.73][669.73](Applause).
You would start with me.
Oh, well, yeah. Got to start with something.
Exactly. Okay, for those of you who don't know, the Chum Bucket at Sebastian High School is a food pantry specifically for Sebastian High School students. We deliver food once a week to their homes, and we do that so that we can preserve the confidentiality of the program. Nobody knows who's getting a box unless you tell them. The other thing that was really important to us was to keep the integrity of the box, the stuff that we put in the box. So we concentrate on protein items. We get fresh vegetables from Shining Lake Garden. We couldn't do what we do, though, without our Sebastian community. And Father said it great in the beginning. He said that we're a jewel. We really are. We have some of the most generous, helpful people in Sebastian. If I named, like you said, if you name somebody, you're afraid you'll leave somebody out, there's just so many. There's so many people who help us every single week. And the volunteers that we have, we have volunteers who deliver for us. They help us pack. They do vegetables. Some of them are here with us tonight. They're great. We have about 40. One thing I have to say, though, I have to say thank you to Mr. Racine because he allows us to be the Chum Bucket at Sebastian High School. He gives us the space. He lets us run our program. We do rely on him a lot for guidance, but without him, we wouldn't be the Chum Bucket. So thank you, Sebastian. You really are, you're the best. Thank you.[775.11][775.11](Applause).
Is there a website or somewhere someone can donate if they need to, if they feel the need to?
If you want to donate, you can make a check payable to Sebastian River High School, and in the memo line, just put the Chum Bucket, and our secretary will make sure we get it.
Thank you. You're going to notice a theme for the first four of program grants, but the next one is called the Prasad Program. Who wants it? I'll take it.
Whoever's going to talk.
Hi. Thank you for, we're so grateful to Sebastian and the Clambake and the Clambake Board in particular. I got opportunity the last couple of years to work in the background with some real special people and Pat, Wayne, and everybody, just, I touch your feet. The Kashi Prasad Program, I'm the chef at Kashi, and it's really, really dear and special to our heart to welcome and feed people. And we cook an all-organic vegetarian meal three days a week. Everyone's welcome and invited. I hope you all come. Would love to see you. And the Prasad Program, anybody who walks through our door that can't afford a meal is fed. And that's the bottom line at Kashi. And that's really the heart of our, of Kashi is to feed everyone. And thank you so much. Would love to see you out.
I just want to say that prasad is a Sanskrit word that means food that's cooked with love and awareness. And thank you to the Sebastian Clambake for helping us. One of our values, one of our missions is to feed everyone, so thank you.[894.73][894.73](Applause).
Can probably tell we're on a food theme right now.[904.02][904.02](Laughter). So don't come up yet because I want to read a letter, but SOS Cookies is in the house. Their entire baseball team is sitting in the row there. This is a letter from Benjamin Godfrey, Staff Sergeant, United States Air Force. And he writes, "Good morning. I would like the opportunity to speak for my entire unit in saying a big thank you to everybody that bakes such incredible cookies and brownies for us. I was amazed to get two boxes on Thursday, which I opened up to the office, and then the third on Friday, which I handed out to the people standing in line waiting to get their own packages, and then two more boxes on Saturday, which was split between my roommates and cookie platters for each of us to take to our respective office Christmas Eve parties. They couldn't have come at a better time, and we're still amazingly fresh. I can without a doubt say that hundreds of people here in southern Turkey greatly appreciate the thought, support, and comfort you all back home have provided. Hopefully, all involved had a great and special holiday season, that the weather in Florida is as warm as your hearts. SOS Cookies." You can all come up. It's, you know.
They don't say that. They wouldn't move.
Okay, all right.
Well, I was going to tell you that we shipped 148 boxes of cookies to the troops for Christmas. Our goal was 150.[996.93][996.93](Applause). For the month of December, we spent $8,666 to cover our postage for one month, and all of that came from this community, organizations, individuals, and the Clambake. Thank you so much for the support Sebastian has given SOS.[1023.86][1023.86](Applause).
Thank you so much for what you do. And that is what Sebastian is. Okay, more food. The Ecumenical Food Pantry. Grace. This is your program grant.
Okay. In behalf of the Ecumenical Food Pantry, I just want to say thank you, thank you for your donations of both the money that we are to receive. We, it will enable us to meet our goal, which is to feed the hungry and the homeless. And I think that we do a real good job in doing that. We are giving out between 450 and 500 families a meal each, each month, each and every month. We also were able to give out 100 boxes at Thanksgiving time that were extra, and 100 boxes at Christmas time with a toy went along for each and, each and every child. So I am, I would like to take the opportunity to introduce Nancy Maisnick, as I am going to be retiring this year. And Nancy is going to, I'm going to be working with her the entire year so that she will have the opportunity of going through every event that we have, and she'll be well able to take over for next year. Again, thank you very much. I appreciate it.[1124.73][1124.73](Applause).
Retiring at 86? That's terrible.[1133.11][1133.11](Laughter). Grace, you and your team have just made an amazing difference to food insecure people in the North County, and everybody's so grateful to you. Okay, we'll shift gears from food. The Sebastian United Methodist, oh, sorry, I missed one. The River Fund.[1155.86][1155.86](Applause). Nancy pointed me the wrong direction. I was like, thank you. I know.[1169.02][1169.02](Laughter).
I'm Jai, Canterbury Council, the Director of the River Fund. We serve all over the county, but we're so grateful to the Clambake Foundation for this. It really means the world to us. This money goes to serve Backpack Buddy families in the northern part of the county in the summer. We get a list of families from one of our schools, and we deliver food to those families every week. There could be, it varies every summer. The teachers and the, and the school staff choose the families. We don't. But we've had several of the same families over three or four years now. We know the families. We know the kids. Some of the, some of the families have eight, 10 children. Some families have a couple. So we basically do, similar to Chum Bucket, we make sure there's proteins and vegetables and fruit and all the yummy things for kids, too. So thank you so much. This really, really helps.[1231.86][1231.86](Applause).
Great. Okay, now the Sebastian United Methodist Church's Music Camp.[1242.02][1242.02](Applause). When they submitted their request, there was a plethora of drawings that kids made about, "We love music camp," and all these things, so thank you.
Thank you. I'm the music minister at Sebastian United Methodist Church, and I'm very grateful to the Clambake to support our summer music camps. We started out our first year in 2011 with about 20 kids. And last year, we had two separate camps for younger and older children and had 85 kids. I had to expand my registration for the older camp because we had so many kids who wanted to come to camp. So it's a great time for the kids to learn how to work together, to learn how to be better musicians, to learn how to act, and just have more confidence in themselves. So thank you very much.[1294.02][1294.02](Applause).
Awesome, Megan. Awesome. Thank you. And the GFWC Sebastian Junior Women's Club's Science Camp.
Excuse me a minute, Anjani.
Yes, darling.
I know these aren't $3 checks you're giving out. I haven't heard the amounts that you're giving these organizations that are doing tremendous work.
Between $1,000 and $1,600 each.
Thank you. Thank you. My name is Katie Holtz, and this is Beth Messersmith. And we are with the GFWC Sebastian River Junior Women's Club. We hold a science camp for one week every summer. We have students from campers, well, from the ages of kindergarten through fifth grade. We provide them with hands-on science activities all day long. Every 30 minutes, we switch it up. Each day, we have, each day, we have a different theme, and the goal is, if you're not having fun, you're not learning anything. So we try to keep it fun, and we try to make it relevant. We, last year, were able to purchase some small robots. I'm hoping this year, we can teach some computer coding, and this check will go a very far distance. We like to thank the Clambake a lot for that. That is wonderful. We hope to foster a love for science and technology and engineering and mathematics so that our students in the North County can be better problem solvers for our future. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.[1395.98][1395.98](Applause). Okay, when the beneficiary, the beneficiary grants are next, capital improvements. And when the groups came before the Members' Council, the Members' Council was like, oh my God, they're all worthy projects. What do we do? So what they decided to do was to give the first two organizations that you'll hear from the exact amount that they asked for. They were small amounts, but they filled the need that they, that they had. And then the other one, two, three, four, five after that all got the same amount, which, to satisfy, Bob, we will let you know what that is. So I was actually going to ask, going to ask our vice president, Pat Revizio, to come up and, and take the mic for a little bit and present the beneficiary grants.[1441.23][1441.23](Applause). Woo-hoo, Pat! Yay!
I guess I get to give away the big bucks, huh? Okay. Our first beneficiary is the Economic Opportunities Council, and they're going to receive a check for $1,850 tonight.[1463.02][1463.02](Applause).
Hello, hi. I'm from the Economic Opportunities Council. And basically, we're a community action agency in the county, but our biggest project is we serve preschoolers. So we're the Head Start Program in Indian River County. So this check would definitely benefit them. Right now, they're in the rain when the bus drops them off, so now we'll have protection for our little people, as I call them. So we're very pleased on, and on behalf of the 340 kids that we serve, we're very thankful.[1499.36][1499.36](Applause).
Thank you. Good job.
Sorry.
You got to give away a lot of money. I don't want to give away a lot of money. Ecumenical Food Pantry is our next recipient. I believe that was some air conditioner money in there.
Yes, it did.
And we're very grateful for that. It helps us to keep safety guidelines where we store and, and keep food. It keeps us doing what we're supposed to be doing. It also provides comfort for the people that are waiting, the recipients, to come into the food pantry. Sometimes in the hot summer, they're there very early before we open, and then they stand in a long line and to get in when there's a lot of them. And they really appreciate being able to come in to get a little breath of air. It's also wonderful and really necessary for our wonderful 22 volunteers that we have that it requires to keep the food pantry open for three days to make it possible for them to get their work done, because it's really work, lifting a lot of boxes, tugging and pulling. So it's really labor, and we really do appreciate the air conditioner.
Our next beneficiary is Sebastian River High School Crew. Is there anybody here from Crew? I guess not. Yeah? You'll take that? No. Our, our next beneficiary is Kashi Ashram.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you all, leadership of Sebastian and all the Clambake Foundation, everybody who worked so hard. Very grateful. I brought this, this is on your desk out there, but one, the program Kashi's working on is the Septic to Sewer Program, and we're basically trying to help preserve Mother Nature. And we, we're taking care of the lagoon, St. Sebastian River, and by getting off of Septic and onto Sewer, and this money will go to help us plan, engineering, and cost the program to be able to do that. We've done quite a lot of work over the years to protect the environment. And also with added capacity of the sewer, we'll be able to serve, we host a lot of people, host a lot of retreats. We're in particular doing a lot of retreats with veterans suffering from PTS, and this money and sewer system will allow us to serve more people, and that's the mission of Kashi. So thank you very much, all of you.[1687.61][1687.61](Applause).
Do you need to show? Do you need to see this? Because I know you're...
No, we're just kidding. Did I say the amount? Well, the, the last six beneficiaries get $7,600 apiece. Okay. St. Sebastian Catholic Church.
Hi, I'm Tony Danini, representing St. Sebastian tonight. We had a major expansion of our parish hall this year and to provide a gathering place for our faith community and also for the community at large, particularly our young people. There's meeting rooms and audiovisual aids, and it's a beautiful, beautiful facility. It came out very, very nice. Part of that, we also expanded our kitchen, and we desperately needed to upgrade our kitchen equipment and burners and ovens and freezers and so forth because, and that's what this money will be used for. Very proud to say that St. Sebastian provides over 200 meals a week to homeless and homebound people in the North County. They're all delivered by unpaid volunteers and cooked by volunteers at our, at our facility. Some of the homeless guys will take more than one meal and tuck it under their arm for the next day or the day after. They're very much in need, so it's, it's a great, great thing, and I'm very proud to be involved with it. So thank you very much, and thank you, City Council, for your attention tonight. Appreciate it.[1799.26][1799.26](Applause). Appreciate it.
Our next beneficiary is Treasure Coast Rugby Foundation.
Thank you. Thank you. We're very grateful to the Clambake. The Treasure Coast Rugby Foundation has been in existence for about 12 years. Our aim is to foster the development of the youth on the four counties of the Treasure Coast through the game of rugby, teaching them social skills, sporting, fitness, and community activities. And I'm proud to say that for the last nine years or so, we have been actively volunteering in the community here in Sebastian with the Clambake and with many, many other festivals. For example, this weekend, we had about 50% of our players out in Felsamir at the Frog's Leg Festival and 50% here in Sebastian at the Art Festival. We have two teams. The girls' team was founded, we're going into our ninth season, and we were the very first girls varsity rugby team in the United States. And that has really put Sebastian on the map as far as world, not world rugby, but USA rugby is concerned, and in fact, in other parts of the world. What makes me especially proud is that during these last eight years, we have managed to achieve 11 full four-year scholarships for girls at various colleges and universities here in the United States. We started the boys' team two years ago, so we haven't really developed too much in the way of scholarships for them. We are, we've also created Sebastian as a center of excellence for rugby. And the Florida Youth Rugby Union uses Sebastian as its center for high-performance youth seven -a-side rugby training. You play rugby both sevens and fifteens. Well, the state teams come here to Sebastian for all of their training facilities. And the money that we're receiving today is going to be used in conjunction with the Sebastian Soccer Association to help develop these facilities for rugby. We are determined to put Sebastian in the number-one spot in the country for rugby. Thank you very much indeed.
And last but not least, Sebastian Soccer Association.
Pat, that's our dentist.
Thank you.
Don't lose it.
We're with Sebastian Soccer, and we really appreciate your support of Sebastian Soccer and all the youth sports in our community. We work really hard with our little club to provide a place for kids to play. We have places for kids from 4 and up, and we do have registration open right now. So have your kids and grandkids come out and play with us. And this money's going to go, like the rugby said, we're going to be sodding some fields and developing them for the kids to play. So, thank you very much.
That was an interesting.
Bob, in case you weren't adding it up, we gave away $64,900. I'd like to thank the City of Sebastian, Joe, the Police Department, and everybody that works under the different departments in the city for helping us. You guys are great. Thank you.
Okay. Almost done. Now, here's the reminder moment. Sebastian Clambake 2018, November 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. 2nd, 3rd, and 4th. Beneficiary info will be on our website starting in March, and the deadline will be in May. Slogan contest. We've had great slogans. Last year's one was "America Runs on Clams." We've had "One Good Clam Deserves Another." We've heard, we've had "All Clams on Deck." We've had so many, so many wonderful slogans. We need your help because we might be very good at working at Clambake, but we can't think of slogans. So, you can do that at our website, sebastianclambake.com, or write to sebastianclambake@hotmail.com, any of those things. And that's where we'll have all our information. And if you're in a business or know people in business, consider supporting us. Consider being a sponsor. That information is also on our website. It helps everything. And finally, really, support your local festivals, especially the ones in Sebastian. They're awesome. We just had two very successful, we had the Fine Arts Music Festival, very successful, Felsamir's North County. The support there was great. The Shrimp Fest is coming up in March. It's going to be in Sebastian for the first time, so that's going to be awesome. We have the Pelican Island Festival. We have July 4th. Just support your local festivals. They all give money back and helps make this community this wonderful flow of love that we have. So, thank you very much. Thank you, guys. We're so grateful. I know you've got a lot to do, but we really wanted to have time for everybody to see what these organizations do. So, see you next year, same time, same place, with hopefully more money. Namaste.
Well, don't you wish we could start every council meeting off like that? You know, it's, it's hard to not be beaming with pride in this great community. And, you know, it's just, you all are what makes this such a special community, the Clambake Foundation, the hard work that you've done over the years. I remember Rich Stringer sitting on a dais, scratching some things out about an idea he had a long time ago, and now look at what you've become. I'm very proud to be a citizen of Sebastian, and you guys make that happen. So, thank you. All right. Counsel, let's just, brief announcements. January 26th, the Chamber Concert in the Park, 20th Street Jazz Band, will be playing from 5:30 to 8:00 p.m. On February 9th, the Chamber Concert in the Park will be Professor Penneygood's band from 5:30 to 8:00. And on February 10th to the 11th, the Sebastian Craft Club Show will be in the Riverview Park from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Are there any other brief announcements? All right. Thank you very much. At this time, I'll go ahead and adjourn the regular City Council meeting and reconvene as the Community Redevelopment Agency. Roll call. Oh, we don't need a roll call, do we? We're good.
All present.
Okay. I need a motion on Item 7B, approval of the minutes.
So moved, Ms. Mayor.
Thanks, sir. I'll second that. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Leads us up to Item 7C, Consider a Septic to Sewer Program Grant. Ms. Mayor.
Ms. Mayor?
We have two Septic to Sewer applications that we presented tonight in your agenda packet. They're fully described. All the documents are in place.
One moment, if you don't mind. Cynthia?
Thank you. I just need to recite myself. I actually am an owner of an LLC that owns several of the units that are up for consideration. I've not participated in the application. I've not advised the city regarding this matter. It's, I'm obviously not a voter, but I want to disclose that conflict and remove myself from the dais, if that's okay.
All right. Thank you very much for that. Yes, sir.
Excuse me, sir. I'm sorry.
Not a problem.
As I was saying, there are two applications, Septic to Sewer Program. All the documents are in place. And if you need further explanation, I'll turn it over to Ms. Fraser, our Community Development Director. Otherwise, we are recommending approval.
Do I have a motion?
I move approval. Second.
Motion is second. Does anyone from the public wish to speak on the Septic to Sewer Grant Programs? Seeing none, do, does any council members have questions of staff? Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Mayor, is that for both of them?
That's for both of them.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Dodd?
Yes.
Mr. Evino?
Yes.
Mr. McPartlin?
Yes.
Chairman Hill?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right. Great. I will adjourn the CRA and reconvene to the City Council. And that would lead us to the consent agenda.
Mr., Ms. Mayor, I'd like to remove Item B.
Item B? All right. Anyone else? Can I get a motion on A, C, D, E, and F, please?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Evino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilmember Dodd. Item B.
Okay. Let me get down here.
No problem.
This is just a procedural note on my part. Item B is actually approving the fiscal year budget calendar for the 2018-19 budget cycle. And in that, in that calendar, we're indicating that on the February 14th, 2018 meeting, that council's going to finalize operating budget objectives. What I'd like to clear up in my own mind is exactly how we intend to do that. I've got a series of objectives that I can provide to the city manager to make part of the agenda item for that February 14th meeting that we can then discuss whether we want to bring any of that forward. I think in the past, we haven't really done that, but since it's on this, on this list of tasks, I'd like to see if we can make that an agendized item and then have each council member maybe provide input that they might have to that prior to the February 14th meeting.
I see you're, you're basically just requesting that council get with staff relative to that prior to the 14th to go over individual objectives so that they can be placed on the agenda for discussion.
Yes. And then actually include on the agenda an action item to review those things and make a determination whether we want to include any of those as part of the communication to the Budget Committee as well as to the staff.
Okay. Any objections?
I have none.
Give the motion to...
Okay. With that, I move approval.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Thank you. Item 9B passes. Leads us up to committee reports and appointments. We have an appointment to make the Police Pension Board of Trustees.
Mr. Mayor, we have Randy Moyer, who's applied, and he's here to be interviewed if he'd like to.
Okay. Counsel, what's your pleasure on Item 10A?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval.
Second.
Any other nominations? Looks like we've got it. Thank you very much. Appreciate you. We have no public hearings this evening. Actually, are there any other committee reports from members? All right. Hearing none. We have no public hearings. Leads us to unfinished business. Item 12A, approve city attorney agreement with James D. Stokes Esquire. Ms. Griffin?
Yes, sir. On January 10th meeting, Mr. Stokes was selected as the new city attorney. I was instructed to supply him with representative contracts for his approval, nonapproval for presentation here tonight to the City Council. I submitted two practice agreements to Mr. Stokes, one which reflected a per-hour charge in compensation, another one that reflected a flat rate charge for compensation. Mr. Stokes is here this evening to discuss, and I'll leave it up to council which one, obviously, that they wished to pursue.
All right. Very good. Counsel, I'm thinking of getting some public input on this before we go forward. So is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item?
Mr. Stokes is here.
I'll go get to him in a minute. Daddy, yes. You are on the clock, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You're welcome.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
The previous group that did the presentation, obviously, they got carte blanche, huh?
Yes, they did.
Can you hear me? Is this mic working? Can anybody hear me? Good. I guess if you're special in this community, you get as much time as you want, right? But if you're a voter, or you complain a lot of concerns...
Sir, do you have anything to speak?
Yes, I do.
On this item, as I'm speaking...
I'm going to get to it.
Sir, sir.
Sir?
Stop for a moment. Sir, stop for a moment.
You're cutting into my time.
When I'm speaking, I would expect that you don't. So, do you have anything to say on this specific item?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Does the clock start now?
You may proceed.
As you know, picking a charter officer, city attorney for the community is a very important job. I noticed that in the transmittal, staff did not make a recommendation either way. And I looked at the agreements, the two agreements that were proposed. One for $200 per hour, based on how many hours they do per year. And then there was a flat fee of $8,000 and change per month, based on, basically, the wants and needs of the staff that they need as far as resolutions and so forth and so on, being that I have a short period of time. I just thought that, one, it's okay to negotiate with your lead attorney that you picked tonight, but there was also a second attorney that I think you should also consider and be open-minded so that you get the best rate for the community as well. I don't think you should give carte blanche to an attorney that's just going to give you many hours over the year because, first of all, you have a budget that you need to stay within. I didn't see that here, but I know it's within your budget. You don't want to exceed that. So, most of the litigation that is done is usually handled through personal injury through the insurance company. So I would suggest that take a careful look at the $8,000 and change per month, and if there's any additional litigation that needs to be handled, that an expert attorney can be brought in to keep the expenses down to this small community that we have, and to leave it wide open. And then, if for some reason, you cannot come to terms, then you should consider negotiating with your second-best choice so that you're working in the best interest of the community to keep the expenses of the legal division and the legal department down. Because as you know, it can get very expensive. So, if you looked at your past litigation over the years, I want to remind you, most of it is personal injury. It's trippin' falls. The standard work is the stuff that's handled for the boards, the resolutions, and the ordinances. And I'll leave it at that. You make the decision. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You're so generous.
Thank you. Is there anyone else from the public who wishes to speak on this issue? All right. Seeing none. Counsel, we chose to go forward with this and sent staff forward to put together an agreement with Mr. Stokes. Would you like to hear from Mr. Stokes, or would you like to go ahead and make a motion? Pleasure?
I actually have two quick comments, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
In reviewing these agreements, both, you know, relatively, I just want you to be aware of some things, okay? The first is, and this applies to actually both agreements, so it's not one versus the other. The first is in Section 2 term of the agreement, the city charter actually provides a procedure for the removal of charter officers. And it makes a distinction between with cause versus without cause. And it does not provide for notice in removal of a charter officer with cause. Okay? So I just kind of wanted to point out that particular distinction in, that's in the charter. The second one is just regarding, the second point I wanted to make is regarding the indemnification provision. Again, it is in both contracts. It's in Section 5 of the first one. And this is just generally indemnification, because you're getting independent legal advice on this because Mr. Stokes is not presently your attorney. And the interpretation of this clause is slightly different. The, I will say that as a general matter, I tend to disfavor indemnification provisions. That said, I had a very similar provision in my contract, as did Mr. Ginsburg. And there's no prohibition on indemnification. There are some limitations with respect to a client being able to waive a future malpractice claim. But Florida statute does authorize indemnification for city officers and agents. So this is, you know, some indemnification clauses Florida law would not allow. There are some limitations with respect to malpractice claims with respect that the city potentially could bring. However, this indemnification would generally be recognized under Florida law, and it is a one-way indemnification. But again, that's, it's specifically authorized. It's not in every contract. It's not in every contract. It's probably in most attorney contracts. But I just wanted to advise you with respect to that. There's also an attorney fee shifting provision in Article 10. Again, this is actually pretty common in a lot of contracts, but it's... If there's a litigation regarding this contract, winner pays for loser. Okay?
All right, thank you very much. With that being said, under Article 2 terms of agreement, do we need to make some changes in that in order to make it jive with the city charter?
I would recommend the notice being if it's without cause. So, again, there's no notice needed with cause to terminate. Without cause, that the notice provision be provided. But you may want to hear from Mr. Stokes regarding that.
Okay. Thank you. That being said, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the contract with a flat-rate charge agreement with the changes to Paragraph 2.
I'll second that motion.
Do you guys want to hear from Mr. Stokes, or would you like to...
You should probably ask him regarding the changes you just made.
Mr. Stokes, yeah, that's probably a good idea. Yeah. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. First, I want to thank you for the trust you're placing in me on this. And Ms. Hall and I talked about this beforehand, and the charter would trump the contract anyway as far as the provisions. There are... She's right, in the charter, it has provisions on how you remove a charter officer if you're removing with cause. So that would be a matter of operation by law anyway. So I'm fine with that. And as far as the hourly or the flat rate, as I discussed with each of you, I was good either way. So whatever's in the best for the city is... And I'm looking forward to getting to work.
Great, thank you.
Okay, I have one question. Are you gonna... You have a question? Go ahead.
You go ahead.
All right. Are you gonna set up, establish set hours and have a calendar so that we know when you're available in the office?
Yes, as a matter of fact, I'm meeting with our manager tomorrow. And that's one of the items that we're going to discuss is what days and hours and all I'll be here, and we'll let everybody know that.
Okay, good, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just had a question for the city manager.
Any other questions for Mr. Stokes? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Albert.
If you could refresh my memory, because I don't recall off the top of my head, was Mr. Ginsburg, flat rate or hourly, or both?
Mr. Ginsburg worked at a per-hour rate of $200 an hour.
Okay.
And our... Just as a side note, the budget that we set every year for those legal services was $100,000 per year.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Now, I'll just say that, you know, I'm very comfortable going with Mr. Stokes. Obviously, we decided that at the last council meeting. But this contract where it's a flat fee, I'm much more comfortable doing that than having the hourly rate. Those often concern me. We were very lucky, I believe, with Mr. Ginsburg and his expertise. Basically, if you had a legal question for him, it was off the top of his head. So we were very lucky to have him, and I think we're going to be very lucky to go forward with Mr. Stokes. And I would suggest that we're lucky that it's not going to adversely affect the budget, and I think that's the most important thing. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Welcome aboard.
Mr. Mayor, just to qualify what my instructions are, I will get with the interim city attorney and insert that "without cause" phrase into Paragraph 2 term of the agreement. I'll insert that at the appropriate place, change the contract, and it will be the flat-rate charge contract. And that will be ready for your signature tomorrow morning, sir.
Perfect. Thank you very much. Item 12B, approve city manager search. Boy, we've got a lot going on here. Mr. Griffin.
At the last meeting, I announced my retirement date of the 9th of May, 2018. Also provided options for council with regard to a city manager search. Colin Baziger and Associates was selected by council to conduct that search. I have been in contact with Mr. Baziger about a contract presentation for this evening. And that is in your agenda packet. He is here this evening to answer any questions. I am recommending approval of that contract.
All right, council, what's your pleasure?
I move approval. Second.
I got a motion in a second, thank you. Anyone from the public who wishes to speak on this item? City manager search. Seeing none. All right. Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? I do, actually. Is there someone can come up? The timeline that you guys have set is something like 16 weeks. Is that correct, 14, 16 weeks?
I don't think it's quite that long. It's normally about 12, 12 to 13.
We have sort of a deadline that the city manager has put out there. And that's what is that, about 12 weeks from now? And I was looking at the contract, and it said... We were missing it by three or four weeks. So I was wondering, is there any way to expedite some of this in a way to get in there as quickly as possible or to meet that deadline that the city manager has posted?
Yes, there are, and I'd be happy to sit down and look at it and come up. And we can probably cut two to four weeks off if we need to.
Okay, and, you know, we certainly don't want to cut corners in that process. And we trust that we're getting the best here, as I truly believe we are. So I'm very comfortable with that, as long as, you know, if we could get with the city manager, and I know we'll each individually be sitting down with you very soon, and if we could try our best to get to that, then that would be very much appreciated.
Absolutely. I'd be happy to do that.
All right, great. Any other questions?
No, Mr. Mayor, but our finance director has served as a city manager in the past in absence time, so if it does lapse over, I'm sure he would agree to do that for us.
Yeah, I agree with you there. He seems... He would just jump right in there. But I think it would be nice, too, to have the new city manager
I do as well.
be able to come in and, you know, maybe caucus with the current city manager, go over some of the issues that we have, spend a little bit of time there and maybe get a little bit of a view of the city, so.
We'll do what we can, sir.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Got a motion in a second? Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
If I may, I just want to ask one more question of the city manager, please.
Go ahead.
Mr. Griffin, if for some reason there was a snafu, an issue with the timeframe, and for unknown reasons, you had to stay an extra four or five days or a week, would that be something that would be detrimental to your schedule, or would that be a possibility for you to stick around?
That would not be undue hardship. I care about this community as you do, sir, and I would do what I can to assist this council and the community.
Great. I just wanted to make sure that was on the table. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think you probably should be asking his wife that question.
Denise is already up there.
I'll ask her off, Kelly. All right, thank you very much. 12C, DMC Earth Embankment Design Engineering Update. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. I brought this agenda item forward at Councilmember Dodd's request from the last meeting. If council remembers, in October of 2017, DMC Engineering was contracted to one of our CCNA-selected engineering consultants. They were contracted to do an analysis of the seawall system and integrity of that system and options on if there is a failure of one of those or more of those seawalls. Mr. Cornelius is here tonight from DMC. He's going to make a presentation, so I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Will Cornelius with Dredging Marine Consultants. And I brought pictures. Yeah, I think so. Sorry. Yeah, so we are taking a look at the Southern Canal System, specifically six and a half miles of canal, more or less, including the South Collier Canal, the George Street Canal, Elcom Waterway, and Schuman Waterway. Six and a half miles of canal, I think about 11 and a half miles of canal slope. So that's a good amount of work, but we're, you know, working the general plan of attack for going forward. We... I've started with our first task, which is our review of the existing information out there in Internet land and site reconnaissance. And I pretty much wrapped that up, and now we're getting into our preliminary design that we'll be discussing with city staff. And then after that task, then we'll be coordinating a general conceptual permit, St. John's River Water Management District, an FDIP. And I have quite a bit of experience with another general development town. And we're starting to draft general solutions for the rehab of the failing lots. And I wanted to see if y'all had any questions.
Okay, that typical section you've got up, is that... Is that actually a... Is that a riprap?
Yeah, yeah. About two feet thick of riprap with bedding stone underneath.
Okay, where would the... Where would the... In this, if this approach was used, where would the existing wall be?
The existing walls... Hopefully, you're able to see. This is pretty much the canal right-of-way line.
Yes.
Right here. So this is the city property. Here's the 20-foot easement that, you know, the residents are supposed to not
Right.
build stuff on. So the walls are pretty much, based on what I've seen so far. Unfortunately, some of my site reconnaissance visits were also during the holidays, so I didn't want to go, you know, stopping around people's backyards. But...
They either think you're Santa Claus or a thief, right?
Yeah, yeah. But I was able to catch some of the Public Works guys doing some maintenance and clearing on some of the slopes, which was perfect, because then I was able just to talk with them and get their input.
Okay, so if... In this approach, the existing wall... Is this burying the existing wall?
Yes. I think we'll have more flexibility for the walls that don't have asbestos in it. The walls that do have asbestos have to be treated special, where they're going to want us to entomb the existing wall in concrete and then proceed. Just, you know, that way the asbestos isn't an issue if you just seal it up in concrete.
Okay. Does this require dredging?
No.
No. So even though you're encroaching on the flow of the canal, you're not going to... It's not going to impact the water capacity of the canal, then?
Not from what I've seen. It seems like, from my observations so far, that the canals have about 100 feet of right-of-way, and it's controlled very nicely with a weir here at the end of Elcam Canal. And actually, even for comparison, here's some of the similar canals that we've done in Port St. Lucie have a much tighter right-of-way. That makes it trickier. But I haven't seen that so far, where I don't think we're really going to influence the canal capacity or conveyance that much. But you'll also want to keep an eye on vegetation and trees that I've seen growing waterward of the wall, because during big storms, that can end up being debris and block the canal when it needs to be functioning.
So the idea that we have here is that we have failing walls out there, individual failing walls on individual lots. The concept that you're showing here, is this just one of the ideas that you guys are coming up with? Or is this the idea that you guys are going to be proposing that we go forward with and get permitted through St. John's? And with that being said, would this process work on individual lots? So you have an 80-foot-wide lot. You could do this on 80 feet, just an 80-foot section of this, and would that be functional?
Yeah. I mean, we're going to get with the city staff before we proceed with...
Okay, so this is just a conceptual idea?
Yeah, but we will have pretty much two general designs. One with an asbestos wall, and then one without.
Okay.
Where without, we'll have a little bit more flexibility if we want to remove the wall and just do fresh. It can be done lot-by-lot basis. I think a good plan of attack for an annual maintenance would be almost similar to your annual pavement management, you know, where you attack the most urgent pressing items first, do what you can that year, and then move on to the next one the following year.
So the issue that we have is we have failing walls on individual 80-foot lots. One may be, say, on one section, and then another 500 feet down, there's another one. Or maybe another mile down, there's another one that's failing. And so attacking those ones on an individual basis? Or are you saying that you would do large sections of this type of a plan at a time? Because for us, I believe that we asked for for an idea on how to move forward while individual... solving these individual issues that we have out there while not requiring us to basically build 11 and a half miles of wall?
Yeah, correct. What I would... What we're suggesting is the first couple of years, attack those individual ones that critically needed, you know, to make sure you're protecting public health, safety, and welfare. You know, jump on those right-of-way. Once you have those taken care of, and, you know, nobody's safety is at risk, then you can go for the longer runs.
And just for everyone's knowledge, this is not a plan that we're approving. This is right now, we're... They're in the process of... They're still in the process of seeing what's out there.
Yeah, yes, yes. Mr. Mayor, I just asked... I asked for an update because nothing...
Oh, yeah, and it's... Hey, I'm glad.
I mean, you know, the biggest concern here is that we do have a couple... We have a couple of places where the wall needs to be addressed. And we have some homeowners that we need to address the wall for. However, we don't need to spend money addressing the wall on a lot and find out six months later, or a year later, or five years later, that St. John says, oh, all that money you've spent is for naught because we would never approve that on a one-off basis. We were being told to approve a process that had not been actually approved by St. John's. And what we need to do... I mean, we have a very nice study done by Hill-Tanner back in 2015, but their options, they provided three options, very similar to yours, but they're all long-term options. And in no place did those guys talk about not... About burying the canal and not dredging. I mean, when they talked about actually using dirt, they talked about dredging because they felt like they needed to dredge the canal to get the dirt to do that. So I'm not questioning the engineering. I don't even want to get into that discussion, okay? All I'm saying is that we need to know that whatever we do is correct to St. John's Water Management District. and that St. John's Water Management District will permit it for the entire canal system. So if we take that riprap approach, and it's acceptable that we do that at some point in time, that we know if we do that on four lots, and we don't do it on the rest of the lots on a 1,000-foot stretch of that canal, that we're not going to have somebody at St. John's go crazy with us when we have a storm, and it causes a dam, which it might do. And the St. John's need to understand that if we do this, we're going to have a dam, a partial dam in that canal for a period of time, as we do individual lots. And what is that going to do to the water flow? And are they willing to accept that? Because the city doesn't need to be spending funds to do a jerry-rig fix if that jerry-rig fix is not long-term in nature. It's not acceptable to do that.
Oh, definitely, yeah. And it's our goal to make sure the city gets the biggest bang for the buck, because even on a public work scale, you know, these aren't as critical as, you know, fixing roadways and bridges. The beauty of the riprap, and we're actually thinking about using a larger-sized riprap than you typically see, because that will help with the surges of canal flow, you know, when you have 500 feet of wall, and then all of a sudden riprap section, those larger rocks won't move or scour.
Do you know if that concept that you have right now, my question is, is it going to increase, decrease, or leave the same, the ability of the canal to flow water?
I mean, it's tough without
More so during
more surveys and stuff, but I
And I'm talking more so during, like, heavy storms, hurricane times, what have you?
I wouldn't be concerned with this. I mean, I would be more concerned with, oh, there were a couple lots that I saw, I think just south of the middle school, that had some big, tall Australian pines, in some areas that were kind of overgrown and tight. I mean, I would almost try to attack, you know, clearing some of those and getting that out of the way, you know, if we do get another Irma or Francis and Gene
Gotcha.
from back in '04.
Okay, in your, in the document that's in our, that's in our agenda packet, there was a note under Scope of Services that, that there needs to be soundings every 100-foot intervals, geotechnical boreings every 20 to 30 feet along the bank. And basically, it sounds like that unless that's done, you can't really provide us a truly finished engineering study. Is that correct?
Well, a site-specific. I mean, since we're talking about 11 and a half miles of canal, to give precise construction drawings, we would need
Okay. I just don't want us to come back, you know, three years from now, and somebody says, oh, well, we didn't do those boreings, so we can't guarantee the work here.
Yeah, yeah. What we have is adequate to begin discussions with the St. John's and FDEP for a conceptual type of permit, which the intent is to have kind of a fast track for when we do need to do repairs on a lot-by-lot basis, to expedite the permitting process. And then we'll still have an established routine.
Now, will St. John's provide a permit for the entire canal system based on individual lot construction on an as-needed basis?
I mean, I don't want to speak, but I mean, that's my goal, and I'll try to speak to them as much as I can.
And my last question, do you have a project schedule? Do we have any idea when this is going to get done?
Um, that's the one thing I didn't bring with me. We got our notice to proceed in October? Okay, I think the end of October. So I think, let me see. We should be wrapping up the preliminary engineering design in a couple months, and then segueing in. I'll follow up and get you guys some more precise
I'll do that with the city manager.
We're not going to lollygag.
Yeah, do that with the city manager. But we, I mean, we do have some homeowners that are thoroughly interested in this, so, you know.
Yeah, yeah. And it's, I mean, I don't want anybody to have an unsafe backyard, you know, or worry about, you know, when they're mowing the yard, if their backyard's going to collapse on them.
Yeah, okay. All right.
Anyone else have any questions? All right, thank you very much, I appreciate you. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this issue? All right, seeing none. Item B, approve submission of airport master plan. Mr. Griffin.
Yes, sir. I'm going to turn this over to Scott Baker, our airport director, and he can give you a description of this more fully than I can. Scott?
Good evening. About 14 months ago, council approved the funding and the work order to do a airport master plan that was about four years overdue. And that job was undertaken by our consulting firm, TKDA. Over the course of the last 14 months, we've had public hearings and several meetings with our technical advisory council. And as our growth of that, the TKDA planning staff has made a draft and recommendations as to a capital improvement program for the airport to drive it to 100% sustainability. The items that you see in the airport master plan are, in large part, I don't want to say guesses, but educated guesses of what's going to happen in the future, and what the airport will need to serve itself and the community. So the next step in the process is to forward the draft to the FAA for their review and comment. And tonight, we have Danielle Garrett from TKDA is here to give a review of the, a preview of the executive summary, and to answer any questions that y'all might have.
Thank you, Scott. Good evening. I'm Danielle with TKDA, and we have concluded your master plan for the airport. It was a very exciting project. In your agenda package, as you saw, our executive summary of what our findings were, and how we've talked with Scott and with Joe about moving forward with the next 20 years of growth there at the airport. On the screen, we have the ALP sheet, which is the biggest concern of the FAA. They're going to look at that, and they're going to say, what's the growth for the next 20 years on this airport? And that's the stuff that they want to see. Working with Scott, we're not seeing huge growth here, which is good, because you guys are a fly-in community. You are very embraced in the community, and that's very positive. And we're seeing that with the master plan. So I'm here today just to receive approval that we can send this off to the FAA and to DOT. DOT actually now takes part in that and has to give their blessing as well, since it is their funding that helps to fund it along with the FAA.
Awesome, thank you.
If there's any questions.
Anything else from staff? Counsel, your pleasure.
I move we approve Resolution R. 1618 and forward it on to the FAA.
Second.
Motion second. Any more questions? Any more discussion? Anyone from the public wish to speak on this? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Councilmember Iavino?
Yes.
Councilmember McPartlin?
Yes.
Mayor Hill?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen?
Yes.
Motion carries, thank you.
All right, leads us to public input. Does anyone from the public?
No, there's another, there's another agenda transmittal that goes with that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I mean, does, there's two, it's all part of the same resolution, but one's going to the FAA and one's going to the DOT. Right?
Was it just one resolution?
The joint participation agreement for the FDOT.
I got you.
Or is that part of the, is that part of the plan?
I think Mr. Griffin was showing you the history of coming up to this point. I'm sorry, could you, could you tell us what you're referring to?
Okay. That's fine.
Yes, that was just to memorialize the fact that the council had approved funding before. There's no other action required as far as funding.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. All right, thank you. That leads us to public input. Anyone from the public wish to speak this evening on anything other than what's on the agenda? Seeing none. We'll move to item
Jim?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't see you stand up there. Please, please come up.
Hello, my name is Mary Beth Lucas, and I live at 101 Keystone Drive. And I'd like to first of all, thank all of you for your service to the City of Sebastian. As city council members, we realize that you shoulder many responsibilities, tasks, and demands in the interest of the citizenry. So thank you. And I also appreciate the opportunity to speak on a matter of importance to the residents of Keystone Drive, Sebastian Highlands, many of whom have joined me here this evening. For more than four years, a group of us have expressed our concerns about the unsafe and unsightly conditions of our street, Keystone Drive. A past city official, Mr. Watanabe, continually assured us that our street was next on the list. Nothing happened during his term, and the street condition has worsened. During the 14 years we've owned our property, a Band-Aid approach has been taken as the solution. I heard the term "jerry-rigged," and that is kind of what our impression as residents is, in terms of how the street is taken care of. Road bond filler is applied sporadically. Our cars seem to wear it away in no time, especially at the entrance to Barber Street. Just this week, a young bicyclist was injured when he hit a pothole. In summer 2017, a group of neighbors visited city manager Griffin with an informal petition requesting attention to this matter. They finally found somebody who was willing to listen and respond. Another visit and email request occurred in December 2017. Mr. Griffin assured us that bids were in the process, and the matter would be addressed at this particular meeting. Today, he indicated to me that the item did not appear on the agenda due to key problems with the contracts. Thus, we are here this evening to request formal clarification on where this matter stands in 2018. What is the timeline for the Keystone Drive road improvement project? Keystone is listed as number eight in line for 2017-18. What does this mean? What does overlay-only-as-the-project-solution mean? Please clarify. Again, thank you for your attention and interest.
Okay, thank you very much. When we're done with public input, we'll get a response on that, okay? Let us finish up with public input, and then we'll come ahead. Anyone else from the public wish to speak?
Ben Hocker, City of Sebastian. We've got a warehouse or a storage building from the old railroad train depot, sitting on a piece of property with some concrete pilings that were cemented in. What is the CRA doing in that area? It's a, doesn't look very good. It looks like a blight in the neighborhood. And where's it going? I tried to find some information about a lot layout, but haven't found it. And you just did a festival in the park, and we're going to redo Indian River Drive. We've got bicyclists riding there. I think we can, we allow them to ride on the sidewalk, but might there be some consideration of a bike lane, or like we have on our other roadways? I asked to do that on Barber Street, but we were told we couldn't do it, they didn't have the funds. But redoing Indian River Drive, a couple more feet, wouldn't be too detrimental to the area. Also, we damage all of our swales by parking in the swales during all of these events. We've started with diagonal parking at Captain Hyrum's, continue it all the way down Indian River Drive to the park. It might resolve a lot of the problems that are there. The county also is going to put a sidewalk that was going to continue all the way to Roseland Road along Indian River Drive. That was three years ago they were going to do it. I haven't seen it happen. It's just that we changed some zoning, I guess, in our city. We've got a brewery that ferments their own beer, and they're manufacturing, and they're going to be distributing it. So we have manufacturing now in our downtown area. Does that mean I can set up some manufacturing up at my home? Because I'm residential, or, I don't know what your zoning is, I'm not that sure on it. But it seems like a lot of things are sort of sliding and falling out of the, going by the wayside. You drive down Barber Street, you've got everything, including the sheriff's cars, utilizing the swell as parking. Do the police go by? Do they have any jurisdiction other than our code enforcement to stop and write a ticket, or put a warning on it? I mentioned this many times. I think that's about enough right now. Congratulations on becoming mayor.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else have anything?
Thank you. Damien Gilliam, 1623 U.S. 1. I was happy to see that the Clambakers continue to show dividends to our community over the many, many years. I took offense to one year, they said, when we shut them down, that it was crazy. Well, let's go back to the record, let's set the record straight. Their books were not in order, because we raised issues that money was not appropriated properly, and money was not accounted for. So let's just set the record straight. That one year was crazy. It needed to be shutted down. And I thank the chairwoman for taking over and straightening things out. However, we still need transparency on all nonprofits, not just picking on the Clambake. Anybody that receives funding through the city, taxpayers' money, there should be transparency. Their taxes need to be turned in, and I haven't checked with the clerk to see lately if they've been turning them in, but a profit and loss statement needs to be there. We need to know what's on their balance sheets. We are funding these nonprofits in the tune of $15,000 to $20,000 every time, through public utilities, through police, et cetera, et cetera. And if you've been established in the community so long that you're making so much money to give out so much money, maybe it's time to get off of welfare, the taxpayers' dole, and pay your own security, pay your own public works, and run on your own, so we can take that money and give it to another nonprofit that can show well and good to this community. So, yes, I want to commend, and I want to thank all the volunteers for the city that participated in the Clambake. But we're not there yet. We still need full transparency anytime you're getting funding through the city. And especially, it's not outright a check that the city's writing, but it's in lieu of services. And we have not gotten to that point. And you, as our watchdog, are not asking the right questions. So please, I ask that the next go-around, it's nice that they donated $60,000, what are they grossing? What are their expenses? What's left over? The other thing, Parks and Recreation, I see that you signed the contract for the lighting down there for $375,000. I've been, excuse me. In front of this council, I ask you not to touch the money in Parks and Recreation for repair and replacement. I ask for you to check and have your city manager look into whether it's legal. You're stonewalling us, you're not doing it. We're not going to let up on it, Mr. Mayor. We need to know whether it's legal.
Do not point your finger at me, sir.
Okay. I'm pointing up at the air, sir.
Be careful.
Okay. So, don't get excited. I know we caught you taking $375,000 out of Parks and Recreation, the zones. You've been also, I think it's time for a forensic audit, you've been taking money out of additional Parks and Recreation for other things. Now, I see you're going to buy some property down there with discretionary sales tax money on Indian River Drive. We'll get to that next, the next agenda item. The music festival, I want to thank Mrs. Monet, she did a great job. But remember when I tried to sell the city a piece of property for the parking? Well, now all your parking is on U.S. Highway 1. And now, we're going to have an accident. Because people are now parking in the Because people are now parking in the side of U.S. Highway One and getting out while cars are driving 35, 40, 50 miles an hour, when in essence, I gave you a building for 1.2 million with all the parking that you needed many, many years ago, and you said that property floods out. If you go back to your minutes, and now, look what you're dealing with. We have chaos on our hands. We're using parks for commercial use, and we have no proper parking down there at the Riverview Park when you have your functions. And just get the police report. We've got pictures of it. It's all up and down U.S. One, and it's only going to get bigger. So, what you're doing is you're just creating more of a problem and more of a liability.
Thank you, sir.
So...
Your time is up. Thank you.
How much time do I get, Mr. Mayor?
No more.
I'm sorry. How much time do I get?
Five minutes, like everyone else.
Well, I start at 7:26, and I still got a little time left here.
And it's 7:31. That's per ordinance.
What's that?
Public comment is limited to five minutes.
That's correct. And your time is up.
Well, I checked the clock. You cut me short. Well, anyway, you give extra time to the people you like, and I know you don't like me, but that's okay.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. Anyone else from the public wish to speak this evening? I see none. Boy, I think those festivals are great, and I think that they're really a gem for the city of Sebastian, and they run very smooth, and they're very transparent, and anyone who thinks that we don't have the proper documentation clearly is either ignorant or just telling a lie. So, let's make that clear. We have the proper documentation from all of those organizations. There was a question, several questions, about Keystone Drive. Can you get to that, please?
Yes, sir. I have been in contact with Mrs. Lucas a number of times by email, trying to give her some updates on where we are going with Keystone. Last summer, I did meet, pardon me, with a group of residents from Keystone in an effort to try to get this going and hear their complaints. Mrs. Callahan from Keystone had suffered a fall there due to the rough road, potholes, et cetera, et cetera. Have given instructions to our facilities maintenance department to fix potholes where available, to where we could get this into the budget process for the next fiscal year. To move that along, I ordered a pavement assessment that was completed during the hurricane season, during Irma, and for 1718, it did show Keystone Drive is number one on the list. Now, I do agree with Mrs. Lucas that the numbering system that our engineer has kind of convoluted, and it has an eight next to Keystone Drive, but it's not really an eight. It's number one for that year, 1718. The overlay-only portion of that, the explanation for that, is that the inspection of Keystone revealed that there were no base problems, so all was going to be required would be an overlay to make, to correct the situation. Once I had the pavement assessment in hand, we issued a bid, public bid. That bid closed on January 4th. There were either five or six respondents to that. I think there were five. We chose two, and this is, I was going to use this in conjunction with our new stormwater policy, pardon me. As we were repairing our swales and underdriveway pipes, and we were then going to go in with the contract asphalt paving company to repair the road. Keystone Drive only requires the overlay-only, so we selected two contractors, paving contractors, to go to the next phase, the contract phase, and then I would bring that to council. Within the past couple of weeks, we discovered some abnormalities with the submittals and felt like it wasn't apples-apples that we were analyzing here. We are in contact with those two contractors, and I've called them in. It was my desire to get that contract, those contracts, in front of you tonight. But after discovering those abnormalities in the contracts or in the submittals, I made the command decision to postpone that until sometime in February. I had no other option to do that. I'm not going to bring a defective contract in front of council, so that was my decision. I take responsibility for that. So, where do we go from here? If I can fix those problems with the two submittals I have from the two contract, the two paving contractors, I will bring that contract forward on February, those contracts forward on February 14th. If not, I will have to rebid that, rebid that project. I don't anticipate that happening, but it could happen. I'd like to give council another option. This is a little abnormal. Frankly, I agree with the Keystone residents. This needs to be done. It needs to be done soon. I would like to have it done tomorrow. I stand by this estimate of $30,000 for the overlay-only of this, and as you know, a lot of the cost in this type of project is the actual mobilization of getting, of the company getting their equipment out there. That's where a lot of this cost is eaten up. However, I stand by that. That was the estimate from the engineer, so I have to accept that for now. If council wishes in new business, because we can't take action in public input, but in new business, for me to make another presentation and ask for a $30,000 appropriation, I'm happy to do that, and I'll make the call tomorrow, and I'll see which contractor can be out there as soon as to get this done. If not, I will endeavor to get this on the agenda on February 14th.
Yeah, I would be much, much more comfortable going that route, especially since we've already crossed through the modifications of the agenda section, and so adding something under new business, I think, is not really the way we want to go. My suggestion is to get those contracts worked out and get something to us as quickly as possible. The answer is, what's the next road that's going to be paved in Sebastian?
Keystone.
Keystone. So, the very next road to be paved in Sebastian is going to be Keystone. We have to make sure we do it correctly, but it's the next road to be paved. And so, that's the answer, I think, that we need to give tonight.
I agree with that. I think we need to stay within the process because we get, things get kind of messed around when it's not, and Keystone is the number one on the list for 1718. And so, the issue now is whether we can get the contracts lined up correctly so we don't get the city caught into some type of financial issue with it. I can't see that taking more than two weeks or so. It would surprise me, actually, if it can't get on the next main agenda, especially if you let the contractors know that their ability to get this done might determine whether they get on the agenda or not, so.
All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. There being no more public input, that leads to item 14, new business, 14A, consider the purchase of real property at 1215 Indian River Drive.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Griffin. Yes?
He's busy. Go ahead. Let him go first.
Did you have a question? 14A, sir.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Next agenda item is the purchase of real property, 1215 Indian River Drive. And I'm asking that you authorize the city manager to execute this commercial real estate contract. In late October, early November, I was contacted by a real estate agent who approached me about if the city was interested in property along Indian River Drive, 1215 Indian River Drive, property currently owned by Bruce Sullivan. I think they've owned that property since the early '50s, as I recall. And there is, right now, on the property, an existing 1950s-era motel. Also, on the opposite side of the street, on the east side of Indian River Drive, is a parcel of land that borrows on the Indian River Lagoon. I was in contact with members of council to see if there was any interest in me pursuing this. There was interest from council, so I suggested first thing to do would be to get a real estate appraisal. Everyone concurred. I contracted with Adam Bruce Real Estate Appraisal. He's an MAI appraisal, state-certified appraiser, and that took about four weeks or so. That appraisal came back at $650,000. Consultation with council behind the scenes, I received authorization to proffer an offer with Ms. Sullivan, and I used the number of $650,000. That was countered back to $850,000. I was in consultation with council once again and counter-offered at $700,000. At that point, I contacted the real estate agent and said that frankly, we're going to stop at $700,000. Was contacted about a week later and received what essentially was an offer from Ms. Sullivan at $750,000. I have that offer in your agenda packet, signed by Ms. Sullivan. Couple of things in this contract, if you would go to Agenda Four in your packet, or, excuse me, Attachment Four in your packet, on the second page of that contract, paragraph six, under title, on the initial contract, I had, I had checked in Other that I would require for...
Joe, I'm sorry. Which page is that?
I'm sorry. 277.
All right. Thank you.
Of 286. Excuse me.
Gotcha. Yep. All right. Thank you.
Okay. Everybody on board? Paragraph six, this is different than the first contract that I signed at $650,000. I had checked the Other box, and I've required a fully insured warranty deed. A special warranty deed would only reveal items in the title if there was a cloud on the title that the present owner had created. I wanted to make sure that there wasn't anything further back from that. That's one thing. Also, if you go to page 282 of 286, you see some of the conditions items that I have requested and that Ms. Sullivan has signed off on. This offer is subject to a second appraisal paid for by the buyer and a supermajority city council approval. In Attachment Five, and in consultation with our interim city attorney, I had, wanted to make sure that we were in compliance with what the provisions of our city charter were. And I call your attention to Attachment Five, Section 1.02, Exoterritorial Powers of our Charter, paragraph one, last sentence. And that's, that last sentence is a little bit problematic for me. Let me read it, if I might. It says, "If the purchase price is in excess of the average of two appraisals, approval of the purchase would require a supermajority vote of four members of council." There's a couple of ways to interpret this, I think. I believe this sentence, I believe it stands alone, but obviously, the way it's written, it refers to the previous sentence that talks about the purchase of property that is in excess of 10% of what's in the general fund. Obviously, that doesn't apply here. So, if council agrees with this tonight and orders me to follow through on this, there are a couple of things that I think are up for consideration. Number one, the second appraisal issue. Is that really necessary? Frankly, I do not believe it is, but the strict reading of that sentence by itself requires it, along with a supermajority, along with a number of things in the contract itself, namely, paragraph six, that I just talked about, requesting a fully insured warranty deed, and also environmental studies that I would, in the contingency, I've requested a Phase One environmental study, but also would want to add an asbestos inspection report, considering the age of the building. So, put that out there for council's consideration. I'm recommending going forward with this. I think it's incumbent upon us as a community to preserve what we can along the riverfront. What could happen on the east side of that of Indian River Drive along the riverfront is that someone could put up a private residential building, 36 feet tall, and stop that visual that we see along the riverfront. I think that would be a tragedy in that we have this opportunity right now, and I don't think it'll come along again, certainly in our lifetime. So, I would recommend approval of this with contingencies that I've talked about and some of those open discussion items.
All right. Thank you very much. I'm going to go ahead and grab some public input on this, if that's all right with council, and then we'll go ahead and have deliberations. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this issue? Yes, sir.
I went on the Indian River Property Appraisal site. That property today is valued by the tax office at 422 or 466. The taxes on the property are a little over $7,000. We're going in for 700 and something. What is the plan for the property? It's an old building. The woman who had that property came to you, I think, two or three council meetings ago. There was a discrepancy in the property line. She had a party that was purchasing the property, but between the city property and her property, there was a discrepancy in the line. I don't know what the result of that was, other than if the city purchased the property, it goes away. What benefit, other than having now a vacant lot, because you're not going to put out a bid for somebody to operate a motel? It's added cost on top of it. How much will it cost to remove the building? Because I don't think we have a use for it. You're talking about asbestos, et cetera, and in the '50s. What is the projected plan for it? Is CRA money used in it? Or is it coming out of all the taxpayers' pocket on the bond? What's going on here?
All good questions, and you'll get answers to them. Anyone else want to speak? Yes, sir. No, go ahead, Mr. Gilliam. Mr. Gilliam. That's all right. Go ahead, Mr. Gilliam.
I'm going to try to make an argument real quick here. First of all, in the council agenda to transmittal, city manager had indicated, after conferring with individual council members, first of all, this was not put in the budget. You guys are spending money that you don't have set aside. It indicates that he conferred individually with council members. There's no transparency here. There's no sunshine in the sunshine. This is done behind the scenes. Let the public know that this is Mrs. Councilwoman's property. I'm not going to mention her name. She's a former councilwoman. Let's get that out there, too. Okay? It's important to clear the air, Mr. Mayor. Let everybody in the community know what's going on here, that we are overpaying for a piece of property from a former councilwoman. That's what we're doing. So, also, manager ordered appraisal of the property, so forth, came in 650 after receiving individual clearance from council members. Again, not in the sunshine. We want to know what's going on here, guys. Let's get it out in the sunshine. So, after reviewing this, as a certified real estate broker in the community for 25 years, and seeing lots of property being bought and sold in this community, this is an insult, $750,000 for a piece of property that only has one appraisal, that has improvements on it that we have no use for, according to the Tax Collector's Office... on it that we have no use for, according to the tax collector's office and the appraiser's office. Land value's 342,000. The improvement on it, we have no use for it. They've been trying to sell this property since three years ago. So the message here is it's overpriced, okay? If you go by the assessment value and you add the additional 20%, because usually assessments, everybody knows, they're not accurate. They're not always full value, full market value. So, most of us in the business, we throw another 20% on. So you put another 70,000 on top. At most, on a good day, this property is worth 412,000. You must follow your ordinance and your resolutions. Make sure that you should get two appraisals, especially when it's above and you're paying more than what it's been put forth to you for. You're taking the money from the discretionary sales tax. We have people who have roads that need to be done in this community. You're taking it from the CRA district. We have plenty of opportunity to buy land for this community, if you need land for parking, in the past, that discount, not this council, but previous council members, never took up on. This is a rush to judgment. This is too fast. This is not done in the sunshine. This is a big mistake. And you're gonna hang for this one. Come November, I'm gonna remind the community what you guys are doing with their tax money, and they wanna know why. Our drainage, our roads, our canal walls, I mean, I understand the canal walls, again, thanks to Mr. Dodd, he's pushing that along. Thank you, Mr. Dodd. But there's so many other things that need to be done with that discretionary sales tax money. And as soon as an opportunity comes by, you don't have a committee looking at the waterfront properties that you wanna pick out. There's other properties down there. This is bad, and I hope you guys vote for it tonight, because you will hang for it. Thank you.
Well, thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Russell Herman, 5A6 Redwood Court. I wanna thank the council very much for their fortitude, for their insight. Most of all, I wanna thank you for my children and grandchildren, who hopefully have the opportunity to see our beautiful lagoon area and not have it become a commercial area. So, thank you very much for myself, my children, my grandchildren, so that they may have this beautiful sight to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on this? All right, seeing none. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Mayor, if am I, can I make a few comments regarding the proposed contract?
You may.
Okay. First of all, in our, in the city charter, Article One, Section 102, which is Attachment Five of your agenda packet, generally, the general authority to acquire real property is by a majority vote, as with any other type of purchase. There, if you, and again, this is in Section 102 subsection, 1.02 subsection one. There's some kind of inelegant wording at the end of that paragraph. That is unclear as to how to do a land purchase in excess, how to do a land purchase of certain amounts. The second to last sentence says, "Any land purchase in excess of 10% of the general fund of the current budget year shall require two appraisals." This proposed contract amount is not in excess of 10% of the general fund of the current budget year. Is that correct? Okay. And then the next sentence says, "If the purchase price is in excess of the average of two appraisals, the approval of the purchase would require a supermajority vote of four members of council." And there's actually another, there's actually a Florida statute that addresses, that's actually part of the open records law, that provides for certain thresholds for voting for purchases in excess of $500,000, if you are utilizing that exception to the open records law. We are not in this circumstance, because the appraisal has been provided to council and has been subject to open records this entire time. So my recommendation in proposing the contract was to, in the contract, require a supermajority vote, which is actually in the attachments there, because you either read that last sentence in conjunction with the prior sentence, which would imply it doesn't apply at all, or you read it as a standalone. And I think the more conservative way to read it is to read it as a standalone sentence, although I have my doubts as to whether that was what was intended in how this charter provision was written.
So, if you don't, I don't wanna interrupt you, because I know you're flowing right now. So you're saying that you believe the charter stating that we indeed, even if we decide to go forward with this purchase, need to get an additional appraisal?
Actually, no, I've not actually quite addressed that yet. It is, let's actually think through this. Okay? If the, if you get a second appraisal and have an average, what does it matter what the appraisal amount is?
Correct.
If you have a supermajority vote?
Right.
So you are basically just going through the exercise of getting a second appraisal.
So you're saying that?
And that was my logic in saying, we should put this as a contract term in approving this, with respect to this particular contract. Where we might get into trouble is if you vote three to two, which you, you know, you haven't discussed this matter yet, I don't know how you're gonna vote it. We don't know yet what a, in that case, I would recommend, we need to get a second appraisal, see if it's above or below, see whether simple majority would rule that or not. I do not have an answer to that yet. I do not think we have a second appraisal yet, correct?
Correct.
Okay. And you can't do an appraisal of this type of property, you know, overnight or anything like that, so. So again, I, the safest bet, the best circumstance would be for us to have a supermajority vote. Of course, you should vote, as with any matter, as to what you think you should vote for. But I feel like if it is not a supermajority vote, that is when we absolutely have to get a second appraisal to determine whether, what the end result is. Ideally, we would've had two, but that just was not, didn't happen. But the one that we have is above, is below the contract amount, right? So I will presume for now that if that's a standalone sentence, you need a supermajority vote.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask you one more question. So if in fact this council gets a supermajority vote to go forward with the purchase at $750,000, this contract as it states, states that we should go forward, that we will get another appraisal. The contract states that.
I mean, you can provide to waive it, but...
So we can amend the contract?
I mean, the issue is, we're getting an appraisal just to get an appraisal.
Right, to waste 1,000, $1,500.
And this is presuming it's a supermajority vote, which I don't know what it will be, because you haven't voted yet. So, you know, again, the safest route would be to get that second appraisal. But that's, you know, I, my, again, we tend to be conservative as attorneys, right? I, the best thing would be to get that second appraisal, that way, we have full clarity. Okay? So again, my recommendation is to get that second appraisal, just because you're safe. You're safe either way.
All right, with that, I'll move approval...
But you have not considered that second appraisal, so from a logical standpoint, it doesn't make sense.
With that, I'll move approval of the sale, or the purchase of the property, direct the city manager to execute, as the contract states.
Okay, I have one more comment. May?
That's a motion.
Okay. I'll let you see where they have a second.
So the motion is to move approval of the sale, or of the purchase of this property, as the contract is stated.
So with the second appraisal?
Correct.
I'll second and for discussion.
Okay, very good. Now, I apologize, I...
It's okay.
Go ahead.
Okay, my next comment is with respect to the form of the deed, okay? In the most real estate transactions, what you want is you want a warranty deed. You want a warranty from the seller that they are giving full right, title, and interest, and that they are warranting, that they're the seller of this property, and have the ability to transfer that. You want all of the statutory warranties involved. So in most real estate transactions, again, as an attorney, I advise people, you want a statutory warranty deed, okay? Or a warranty deed, not a special warranty deed. A special warranty deed limits the seller's warrants that they make, warranties that they make, with respect to their title. And again, I've advised the city manager with respect to that. Somehow that got translated into the wording, "Fully insured warranty deed," instead of statutory warranty deed, which is, which I think is fine, it's just they may not have known what that meant. But when they came back with another contract, it says, "Special warranty deed" again, and I don't know why. I don't know whether that's because of the border issue that they've brought before council before, that this particular seller's attorney has brought before council as a proposed thing to work around, which will frankly go away if we purchase this property, because the borderline dispute with respect to the city of Sebastian, we have unified the ownership there, and so that's really a non-issue. Or whether there is some other issue with respect to the title. So my recommendation would, again, to require a statutory warranty. The third thing that's not really clearly addressed is who pays for title insurance here, so, okay?
All right, thank you.
I'll amend my motion to include the warranty deed, to change, to change from, in Paragraph Six, where it says title, from special warranty deed to statutory warranty deed.
I'll second the motion with discussion.
Actually, there was a second, I don't know if you're gonna make it...
Okay, I'll second the amended...
All right, thank you. Discussion. Counsel, maybe?
So, the last two sentences, I think that the, what was the last sentence again? Give me one second here. And I'm just going by my experience in reading state statute over the years. I know, as counsel said, it can be confusing, but I think that the big thing with the wordage in here says, "Two appraisals in the last sentence," which really refers back to the two appraisals of the second to last sentence. So I don't agree with that it would require a majority vote, or a supermajority vote. I think that it says if you have two appraisals and it's 10% of the general fund, which it's not, then that would require that. So I don't think that we need to have a supermajority vote of a, was it a 401? Or 500? Is it 401?
Well, I think the charter, I think the charter states that if it's more than 10%, or if it's, if it's more than, is it more than above appraised value, or more than above the average of two? If it's more than that, then it, our charter requires...
I got you.
The supermajority vote, not the contract. So that, I think, is pretty clearly stated in the contract. If we are to purchase this property at above the appraised value, we do require a supermajority vote, if I'm not mistaken.
Yes, and let me, again, this is a little bit of a non-traditional approach, but as Mr. Gilliam's pointed out, there does exist a tax appraisal for this property. A tax assessor's appraisal for the property. So we could interpret that if you average that with the MAI appraisal we got from Mr. Proust, again, it clearly actually, the purchase price exceeds that average.
What I need, what we need is legal advice. Our attorney recommends we get, we do...
Supermajority.
Okay, no. Our attorney recommends that we get the additional appraisal or not.
Yes, she does.
You recommend getting it, is that...
I think you can do it without it.
I need your recommendation.
But I recommend that, just to dot the i's, to prevent future litigation, you go ahead and you get it.
And I concur with that. I think that, as Mr. Gilliam has said, if we wanna, we're showing transparency, I guess, we might as well just get the other one, and now we'll really, in actuality, have three technical, three appraisals, because the tax appraisal's one.
Well, the motion that we're discussing is to approve the agreement that's in Attachment Four, which includes...
Correct.
Getting a second appraisal. So I don't know that that's, you know, I mean, we've already, we've already, the motion says, get a second appraisal, we wanna change the section to the special warranty deed, or whatever, to the fully insured, or whatever we wanna call that statute warranty deed, get a second appraisal, paid for by the buyer, it's gonna require a supermajority of council, closing in 30 days, based on, buyer shall have the right to extend closing to the 30th, and then all of the tenants are to remove the purposes on closing date. So I think those are actually the things that are in the motion that we're discussing. So unless we wanna propose an amendment to the motion, we shouldn't even be talking about whether we do or don't get a second appraisal, because that's actually in the motion to do that.
Yeah, I don't have problems with that discussion, just because if someone's leaning one way or another, versus whether or not they wanna vote for this, then, you know, I think it's prudent to have the discussion relative to that. Any, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd kinda like to back up. I, you know, I don't know about the rest of the council, because in, kind of in a response to Damian's, or Mr. Gilliam's comments about sunshine, you can't do these kinds of things if the very first time it comes up, you bring it out in the public, because then you're gonna have 18 different people trying to buy that piece of property, and you're in a process of doing that. There wasn't, at least with me, and I'm sure with everybody up here, there wasn't any breaking of the sunshine process. There was basically private discussions with an individual who was trying to figure out whether the city should work a deal on a piece of property, and it fit well within the whole confines of what you would have to do. I mean, if a major industry walked in the door tomorrow and said they wanted to build a 60-acre project at the airport, and the city needed to have conversations, the same thing would happen, is the city manager would get each council member in his office individually and talk about the process, and whether it gets support. So I don't think there's any issue with this sunshine thing. I personally, and I don't know, but I would probably think other members of the council, a week ago, when we'd had our final conversation, recommended the city manager that it's now time to bring it into sunshine. Because I felt if we'd gone to the point where it was time to bring it to the sunshine, and I'm sure there's probably other people up here that did the same thing. So I don't think there was any issues with that. I think we need to concentrate on going back and looking at what the objective here is. For the city of Sebastian, the riverfront is really our, that's what we have. I mean, we talk a lot about a thing, about all the stuff. We talked tonight, we spent quite a bit of time giving away a lot of money tonight from an event that was done at the riverfront. We've got a lot of charities that receive money, that do other things, but they receive money from the event at the riverfront. If Sebastian is going to solidify their place in Indian River County in the future, it's gonna be because we're good stewards of the riverfront, not because we're, you know, doing whatever other things we're doing. It's because we're good stewards of the riverfront, because we make the changes we need to make to make sure that that riverfront area continues to provide the services that the citizens need, and provide the ability for the citizens to grow from that. And so I see this piece of property not as, I see it as an investment in the future of the city. I'm not so sure that the piece of the property on the west side of Indian River Drive is as much of an investment for the growth of the city, but I know for sure the property on the east side of Indian River Drive is. And that for us to be able to get that piece of property and turn it into another pocket park that's next to the Main Street boat ramp, or do something like that with it, is worth what the investment we have. I do have a question for the chief financial officer, and I'd asked earlier, I'm not setting him up, just so everybody knows, I'd asked earlier for him to be prepared to answer this question. If we do, if we attempt to do this transaction and it goes through, what in the DST and the CRA will not get funded in the 17, in the 18 budget cycle?
Within the CRA, there's no need to defer any other projects or not fund any projects. There's sufficient reserves or uncommitted balances to handle the 250,000 portion from the CRA. In the DST, the, of course, we'll have time to juggle the budget on the future public works project, and modify other things in the capital plan before we pay for that facility and the construction of that. But I would propose that we would take, basically take it off the amount budgeted in the next two years for the public works facility, stretch it out to a third year to fund that project, using current balances out of DST as well, then, to fund the purchase of the property.
And the mechanics of this process would be, if I understand it correctly, that if we go forward tonight, that you do this, that you sign this agreement, you order the second appraisal, that we then have to rehear this based on the second appraisal? Is the supermajority tonight the final vote?
That's, that's, that's how I interpret it. So in effect, that second appraisal would be an exercise in futility if there was a supermajority. supermajority, because it doesn't, I do not think, if I'm ordered to get a second appraisal, obviously I do that as quick as I can, but for a second appraisal to average what the sales price is, that second appraisal would have to be $850,000. I think the likelihood of that is really remote.
Of course.
Because if council agrees tonight by, by supermajority hypothetically, that they agree to $750,000, that in effect becomes the market for this piece of property. So I think that if there was a supermajority, and I'm ordered to get a second appraisal, I get a second appraisal, but that, in my view, I don't think that second appraisal, when combined with the first, will average that purchase price.
Okay, just so we're clear now, if this motion passes 4-1 or 5-0, you have to get a second appraisal, because that's what the motion includes. It includes the approval of the agreement under attachment four, which includes a second appraisal.
Which is, which, yes, sir, which includes that second appraisal, but the motion could be modified to waive that second appraisal if so ordered by council.
And it was in the motion as stated. It was in the motion as stated by Mr. Hill.
This, he...
To get a second appraisal.
Yeah, he, yeah, his motion was to approve...
The contract.
...this document, and the document includes a second appraisal. So I just want to make sure that we're clear on that, okay? All right. I, you know, the truth, I don't know, riverfront property, sometimes there's not a sanity to how much people are willing to pay for a piece of riverfront property. And if it was me personally, I wouldn't pay $750,000 for that piece of property, and it's not because of that, it's just, I mean, I, you can't build a house on the riverside of it, it's not, you can't do the clearances to do that. You'd have to do a commercial development there, and the worst thing for the city would be for somebody to put another, you know, put a doctor's office on the riverside, because they can get setback relief on that or something. So, and I'm not saying I don't think it's worth $750,000, I don't know. I'm leaving, leaning on the appraisals for this. But it's not unusual to pay higher than the appraised value for a piece of property that has value to you other than the appraised amount. And to the city of Sebastian, this property has high value because of its location and because of what value the city has to place on that river. We just signed an agreement, we approved earlier this evening hiring three consulting companies, one of which is going to do planning documents, I hope, that will begin to look at the possibility of making changes to the land development code so we can further enhance the riverfront. This is just a piece of that pie. And if we can do this within the financial realm of the city, I think it's a good move to do. And if in November it turns out not to be, it turns out not to be, but I think it's a good move to make.
Thank you. Ms. McPartlin?
I just, do we gotta do a second appraisal or not?
Yes.
Look, I personally would think that it's ridiculous to do a second appraisal. There's gonna be another $1,500, and it's silly and ridiculous.
Since I seconded his motion, can I make, can I make an, offer an amendment?
But, again...
Anyone can offer to amend your motion.
Okay, I'm offering an amendment to your motion, that we remove this requirement for a second appraisal.
And I'll agree with that.
Do we have a second on that?
We're gonna get all the statutory warrants, right?
Yes.
Yes. So that, now if we approve the amendment first...
Again, I, the charter does not specify the nature of the appraisal, okay? Let's be clear about that. So, and it is not uncommon for people to use a property appraiser's appraisal for, you know, estimating the value of property. I do it in probate cases every day. And so, again, there exists an appraisal. I personally don't know what the actual value is, but I can pull it up on my phone if you give me a minute. And, again, the, I think we would be okay, because we do, there does exist a second appraisal. We got an appraisal. There does exist the Indian River County Property Appraisers appraisal. We got an appraisal. And really, my interpretation of this, in most circumstances, would be that that last sentence actually modifies the one with respect to 10% of your, of your budget. However, it's not clear, and that's kind of what kills me about this, is that it's not clear whether that sentence, that last sentence requiring a supermajority does modify it. But, again, I think we can interpret that we have two appraisals, we have the property appraiser appraisals, and then we have the one that Proust actually has provided.
Very good.
My feeling is, we don't have a boss. This board doesn't have a boss. But the city charter is our boss. The city charter says we need two appraisals to buy this property.
If it exceeds 10% of the general fund, and that's what it says, if it exceeds 10% of the general fund, we need two appraisals, and it doesn't.
And I'm concerned that if we buy it without a second appraisal, it's gonna come back...
The safest option is to just give another appraisal. I mean, that is the safest option in all circumstances.
And appraisal is about $1,500, right? $2,000? So...
But the contract says the appraisal will be...
Paid for by the buyer, by us. So...
The Proust appraisal was $2,000.
So I'm, I'm listening to you, council. I mean, I think it's ridiculous that we would get another appraisal when we're already purchasing the property, for one thing. It's a waste of money, but is that $2,000 going to protect that purchase? That's the question we have to consider up here.
I'm all in favor of buying property on the riverfront.
To keep it open to the public, because we have a lot of people that walk up and down that, that area, but I don't really want to do it without a second appraisal. That's my opinion.
Mr. Buck?
I think once, if we agree to buy this, we already set the appraisal, as was mentioned before, so I mean, it's pointless. If we agree to buy it for $750,000, that's the market.
Couldn't agree with you anymore.
The second appraisal's gonna be for $750,000.
Right.
Right. So the amendment removes the appraisal. And I seconded that. The concern again is, is that $2,000 is going to get us into trouble on this purchase. So is it worth, is it worth risking a $750,000 deal over a couple grand?
No, let's...
It's not to me.
Nope.
So I will go with the city attorney's original recommendation, and that was to get a second appraisal.
It seems silly, but, well, I don't know what your feeling is with respect to the actual ultimate thing.
If you'll remove your second, my...
I'm gonna, I'll remove all of my motions.
Okay.
So let's start clean.
Okay.
Now I'll remove approval of this purchase and remove the line about the second, oh shit, no.
No, forget that.
No.
How about a...
Let me suggest, I believe what you're trying to get at is that you are going to...
I move approval of this contract as it is, with the addition of the warranty, statutory warranty.
Statutory warranty deed.
Yes.
Indicating that the seller is going to pay for title insurance, and further in directing the city manager to obtain another appraisal.
That's my motion.
Another appraisal plus a environmental assessment...
That's in the, that's in the contract.
Assessment, but the asbestos portion is not in the contract with the asbestos.
So moved, yes. So moved. All right, I got a motion and a second. I'll just, I'll just make a quick statement on this. This property purchase is a one in a million. So, you know, we're talking about paying a little bit, or a bit over the assessed value that we got, and of course, the property appraisers, you know, this, the same owners had this property since, forever, like the 50s. The actual value of the land versus the actual value to the community are completely different things. That is, that is a prime piece of land, and it's contiguous to property we already have. What we do with the property on the west side, we can discuss, and we could talk about that. You know, there's a lot that we can talk about, but getting this piece of property is, is a win for the city of Sebastian. And we're getting it for, you know, a price that's probably more than the owner could get in the market. A business owner probably wouldn't go in and pay $750,000 for this, but the citizens of Sebastian will sure be glad that we did someday. I can guarantee you that. There's been properties that have been put up for sale to the city of Sebastian years and years ago. Cavcor property comes to mind, for instance. The Cavcor property was offered up to the city of Sebastian.
The entire property.
The entire property. The city rejected the purchase of that property. A gas station came in on that property, and then the city paid more for the property that was remaining, because it's an awesome piece of property contiguous to our parks. So the value of the property to the city is much different than the value of the property would be to a business owner. So I am very, very pleased with the work that the city manager's done on this. Of course, he's going to caucus us to determine whether or not there's any desire by council to do this. I'm excited about this, looking forward to deciding as a council what we're gonna do with all of that property, but boy, what a win for the city. Any further comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmember McPartland.
Yes.
Mayor Hill.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kitchen.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Councilmember Yavino.
Yes.
Most carries.
It's unanimous.
Unanimously.
Correct.
Great job.
That's more than a supermajority.
That is. Great job, council. That leads us to City Attorney Matters.
Thank you for your patience with respect to the last matter. It's one of these things where there was not a lot of legal certainty, and again, I appreciate you kind of bearing with me and trying to go through the explanation. I'd like to again reiterate what an honor it's been to serve. This is definitely my last meeting serving as interim city attorney. I've appreciated working with every single one of you on council with respect to the other two charter officers, the city manager and the city clerk, as well as tons of staff, senior staff, the department chairs, and all the members of the city of Sebastian, all the employees of the city of Sebastian. And again, I want to express my appreciation and your trust in me, and thank you very much. I also, in somewhat unrelated matters, wanted to announce, unrelated to my duties as city attorney, I am actually serve on the Indian River Lagoon National Estuary Program, Citizens' Advisory Council, I'm sorry, Citizens Advisory Committee. And the Indian River County members of the Citizens Advisory Committee are hosting a listening meeting to obtain public input from citizens with respect to the lagoon and the national estuary program on February 13 at 6:00 p.m., and that's gonna actually be at the school board office in their board chambers. So I wanted to make sure I got that announcement in, and again, I appreciate the opportunity to serve you all, and I appreciate particularly your patience in this meeting. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I can probably speak for all of us and say that we do appreciate everything you've given us over the last several months, in very difficult times, and you stepped in and it was very seamless, and we appreciate everything you've done for us in that regard. Thank you.
I would also like to thank the interim city attorney for giving us good advice and serving us well. She's done, under difficult circumstances, taken over from Mr. Ginsburg, and has served me well in my office, and I appreciate it very much. Item number two for me, Ms. Rillo, tonight, Angie was here from the Clambake, and others went to great extent to thank me for the support that I have given them to, for the Clambake and other events and things like that. You know, really, I accept those, those thanks on behalf of the, of our employees. I don't want to be sappy about it, but really, our employees extend themselves, both in a volunteer basis and in overtime basis, and they're the ones who do all the trench work down there in the weeds, emptying the trash, keeping things clean, getting cars parked, moving things around, so they're the ones that deserve all the thanks, and I just want to make sure that that's, there's that public affirmation of what they do, and thank you very much to all of them. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you very much. City Clerk Matters?
I want to thank the attorney for answering all my questions. I've had a lot. Thank you.
Great. City Council, Councilman Dodd.
No, I'll lend my voice to the, thanks for filling in, in the attorney's position. Your advice was, tonight was on target, we just had a hard time listening to it, so thank you.
Councilman Yavino.
I'd like to also thank you for your time, and I appreciate the help tonight, and it was difficult. Mrs. Frazier, can you, would you do me a favor? I just want to try and answer a couple of questions that were asked earlier. If you don't tonight, possibly on the next agenda, we bring up the train depot and what we're doing with it. And also, Mr. Griffin, it's been, I think, two or even three meetings now that Mr. Gilliams has brought up the lighting and Parkton Recreation monies in regards to that. Do we have anything that we can put in the agenda to show exactly where the monies go for that and put that to sleep?
Yes, sir. I'll be talking with Mr. Stokes about that tomorrow, and it's one of the first things that we'll bring forward.
He just keeps bringing it up, and I just, I know that we're not doing anything inappropriate with it, but if we may can just put it down on paper, so the next time he comes up here and asks, we have something that we can actually just show him and say, look, it's not being done in the public's work. Thank you. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, sir. Mr. McPartland?
Yes, again, Joe, his staff did a great job at the Arts and Music Festival this past weekend. The weather warmed up, which was very good. Staff does a tremendous job, and thank you, Cynthia, for all your time as interim attorney.
All right. Thank you, sir. I have nothing further. Vice Mayor?
I just want to thank Cynthia also. You've done a wonderful job considering what we threw at you over the last couple of months, and especially tonight, going back and forth with that last item on the agenda. So thanks very much for everything that you did for us, and I hope everyone attends the concert in the parks. There's two of them in two weeks, and they're great. Thank you.
All right, yes, they are. There being no further business, we are adjourned.